And welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of March 26, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Here.
Councilmember Hickman.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm feeling very patriotic this evening. This is the third time today that I've said the Pledge of Allegiance, along with some of our staff members. Item number three is approval of the City Council conference minutes of February 12, 2019, in City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of March 12, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floors to approve the minutes. By show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, April 28, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. I entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Sunday, April 28, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. Whereas Oklahoma has recognized Arbor Day through observance and ceremonies for more than 100 years, and whereas we recognize the importance of planting trees to beautify our parks and public places and around our homes and businesses, and whereas we recognize the environmental, social, and economic benefits of trees, such as providing shade, creating a sense of community, and visually pleasing neighborhoods, reducing home heating and cooling costs, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and soil erosion, and enhancing property value and economic vitality of the business areas; and whereas it is the purpose of Arbor Day to encourage the planting of trees in urban and rural areas, promote proper management of trees, and to remember the many benefits we receive from trees; and whereas Norman has been awarded for the 16th consecutive year Tree City USA status by the Arbor Day Foundation. Whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation and City Tree Board have scheduled an Arbor Day observance Sunday, April 28, 2019, from noon to 5:00 in Reeves Park as part of the 18th Annual Earth Day Festival. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 28, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day by planting in Oklahoma proven tree for the benefit of all citizens and that of future generations. If Don Minzy would come forward. Our Tree Board does amazing work. Would you like to say a few things?
My daughter, Mariah, she's a certified arborist also.
Oh, wow. So my dad's like a little nervous about public speaking. You know, like most people who get into forestry, he's a little bit of an introvert. So I'm gonna actually do our little speech. Like many of us, I have fond memories of playing in the woods and climbing trees as a child. As adults, we often overlook the benefits of trees, but I'm very grateful that our city council and Norman residents have taken this opportunity to celebrate the importance of our urban canopy. By putting resources into trees that allow us to be a Tree City USA, Norman has established itself as a city that takes its community health and happiness seriously. We are part of over 3,400 communities across the United States that have made this commitment. We have achieved Tree City USA status by meeting the four core standards of sound urban forestry, which you mentioned, maintaining a tree board, which my dad is the chair of, and we have a community tree ordinance, which we're very grateful that you guys passed, and we're really excited about that. We have to spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry and celebrating Arbor Day. But what does this mean as far as benefits for our community? It may be a little bit surprising, but there are actually health-related reasons to protect and plant trees. Tree leaves absorb 90% to 95% of ultraviolet radiation and thus protect people from this radiation. This can reduce instances of skin cancer, cataracts, and other ailments related to UV radiation exposure, not to mention heat-related illnesses. Recently, you may have heard about a pest called the Emerald Ash Borer. It's wreaking havoc in the eastern portion of the United States. This pest kills 100% of ash trees that are untreated. This has greatly reduced the number of trees in their environment, up to 1/3 of the trees in some cities. However, the spread of this tree-killing beetle gave scientists the opportunity for a natural experiment to show the effect of environmental changes on public health. In the 17-year period that was studied, there were more than 15,000 additional deaths from cardiovascular conditions such as heart attack and stroke, as well as over 6,000 additional deaths related to respiratory illness. This indicates that urban canopy actually keeps our bodies healthier. Research also indicates that investing in trees is good for our community's children. A couple of years ago, strategically placed sensors measured pollution levels in nearly 150 Oregon neighborhoods. They found that in higher-treeted areas, young kids were estimated to have avoided missing more than 7,000 school days annually due to asthma attacks. And a 2015 study found that children exposed to more greenery demonstrated better attention and memory development. Many additional studies have shown that trees improve mood and psychological benefits as well. So as you can see, trees are truly a community resource. They are both the responsibility and the privilege of our community. And many of us are also aware of the financial reasons, which you mentioned, for planting and maintaining trees. The energy savings in summer can't be denied. Anyone who has ever parked in a Walmart parking lot and not made it to that one tree knows it gets hot. Trees also are natural managers of stormwater. They can greatly reduce the overall amount of runoff, particularly when included in an engineering plan, which I hope the city council will take into consideration as Norman moves forward. It is said that a society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they know they shall never sit. In a time when it seems like much divides us, and our differences are more obvious than our similarities, when we strip away everything else, most of us just want to protect those we love and live a full, good life. Looking to the future and planting trees, caring for our urban canopy, and being a community that puts its resources into trees demonstrates the best in us, the better angels of our nature.
Thank you. Don, you did a great job. Item number five is a proclamation proclaiming the month of March 2019 is International Demolay Month in the city of Norman, Oklahoma. I entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March 2019 as International Demolay Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Demolay is a character-building organization of young men from 12 to 21 years of age who are seeking to prepare themselves to become better citizens and leaders for tomorrow by developing those traits of character which have strengthened good men of all ages. And whereas Demolay has carried out the aforementioned goals for 100 years through programs of athletic competition, social activity, community service, and charitable projects; and whereas members of the Norman chapter will observe the year of 2019 as the 100th anniversary of the Order of Demolay so as to exemplify to all citizens here and everywhere their many activities and to tender recognition to their millions of senior demolays. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as International Demolay Month in the city of Norman, and call upon our citizens to join in saluting the young men in the Order of Demolay and expressing grateful appreciation for the fine examples set by them in the building of good character among our youth, thereby aiding in the development of leadership for tomorrow. This is the wrong one. At this time, would Cooper Crabtree come to the podium? Cooper. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
On behalf of Norman Demolay, I would like to thank you for the recognition of our founding month. The Order of Demolay was founded on March 24, 1919. Since that day 100 years ago, we have worked to build young men into compassionate, selfless, and successful people in all circles of life. This can be proven by the examples of Walt Disney, Bill Clinton, and current Oklahoma Representative Tom Cole. As a demolay, you are given opportunities to give back to the community through service, learn public speaking skills, understand the planning and preparation that goes into being a strong leader, and have fun all along the way. In my time as a demolay, I have been a part of food drives, taking care of special needs children, gone on campouts with some of my closest friends, and so much more. We are incredibly lucky to have a city that recognizes our efforts, and we look forward to continuing those efforts for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Cooper. A good group of young men. Thank you all for coming this evening. Item number six is a proclamation proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Norman. Whereas the month of April has been declared National Child Abuse Prevention Month in our country, and whereas in 2016, Cleveland County reported 689 victims of child abuse or neglect, and whereas the Norman community provides children services on abuse and neglect issues and are united in promoting advocacy for children; and whereas communities must make every effort to report victims of child abuse or neglect, and the Norman community serves a number of children locally; whereas effective child abuse prevention and education activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and the partnerships created between all sectors of the community; whereas the Norman community is invested in prevention and advocacy through education to schools, civic groups, and churches, volunteer efforts to local organizations, and philanthropic contributions to assist child abuse response, treatment, and advocacy. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Norman, and urge all citizens to dedicate themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children's and families. Travis Humphrey? Thank you. Thank you for all the good work that you all do. Want to make a comment?
Thank you so very much for this proclamation and recognizing April as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. I'm joined at the stand with a colleague, Andre Danley of Mary Abbott Children's House. I really appreciate that. Also want to acknowledge in the audience Vernon Hooks with the Center for Children and Families Boys and Girls Club. And many agencies in our community work with children who have gone through traumatic experiences. And it's a wonderful community to live in that we are so proactive to address this and ensure every child has an opportunity to heal from trauma and neglect. Sadly, Oklahoma has the highest rate of adverse childhood experiences out of the rest of the nation, and that's a sad statistic through the Oklahoma Department of Education. But we, as a community, are not ignoring that. We're not sweeping it on the rug. We're addressing it because of the great organizations that in part are supported by the city of Norman. So thank you for that. Thank you for the support that we all receive from the city, in particular through the Social and Voluntary Services Commission. And thank you for all the support that you, as individuals, give to our agencies and the clients that we serve. This last year, and we can all tell stories, but this last year, we were able, at Bethesda, able to help a young man, a young boy, who had gone through sex trafficking experiences that left him traumatized, unable to go to gas stations because they triggered past memories that left him screaming and yelling and just unable to cope. But it was an amazing experience for us at Bethesda after a year with, working with that boy, to see him walk out with adopted parents in a safe environment, and you would never know what he had gone through. And that's the type of healing that happens at places like Bethesda, Mary Abbott Children's House, Center for Children and Families, supported by CASA, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Love Works, all of the great organizations in our community. So on behalf, if it's okay to say, on behalf of all these organizations, thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. As a person that worked in the public schools for over 32 years, as a counselor and as a principal, as a special education teacher, I have thought for many years that if we could end child abuse and neglect, we could, we could do more for mental health, more for drug abuse. We could clear out our prisons. This is a huge problem, and everybody needs to be involved in some way. So thank you all very much. Item number seven is a proclamation proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than 3 million people; and whereas autism is a neurological disorder that interferes with the normal function of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background; and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. Whereas doctors, therapists, and educators can help people with autism overcome challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis; and whereas in the city of Norman, there are several United Way agencies that work with adults with autism, including Council for Developmental Disabilities, Able Body Learning to Excel, which is ABLE, Among Friends, Full Circle Adult Daycare, and Transition House. And whereas autism affects 1 in 68 children in the United States, and in Norman, there are programs provided for autistic children by Norman Public Schools, Autism Norman, Easter Seals, the Early Foundations Program at North Haven Church, and the Cleveland County Health Department's Sooner Start Program. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Norman. And Tom Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and honorable members of the council. I come before you today as an autistic person, as the father of an autistic child, and on behalf of the Norman chapter of the Aspie Adults of Oklahoma Organization. Our organization was founded in 2015 as a means for autistic individuals to experience camaraderie, as well as share personal experiences and advice on what it is like to be autistic in a neurotypical world. We meet at the Norman Public Library on the second Saturday of every month, and our Facebook group has approximately 500 followers. Our members come to our meetings driving from as far away as Duncan. Yes, this moves. We have members as young as 18, and we have members in their 60s and 70s. As our older members aptly demonstrate, being autistic is not something that is ever going to go away. Autistic children do, in fact, grow up to become autistic adults. And those autistic adults can be found throughout our city. While issuing proclamations such as this one are routine for the members of this council, I want to assure you that my standing before you is anything but routine. In most parts of the country, autistic people are often overlooked when it comes time to find someone to speak on behalf of the autistic. I'm proud of the fact that the city of Norman has seen the merit of having autism self-advocacy groups, such as Aspie Adults of Oklahoma, join with groups like Autism Norman and representing the autistic members of our community. Your proclamation today helps to highlight that autistic people do exist in this community, and our existence is a benefit to this community. Thank you.
Eight, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place item nine through 19 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number nine is the mayor's appointment of Jim Adair, Cameron Brewer, Lee Hall, Keith McCabe, Richard McCowen, Autumn McMahon, Byron Morris, Councilmember Bill Hickman, and Councilmember Steven Tyler Holman to the Center City Administrative Delay Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. I think that's the longest name we have. Item number 10, consideration of the finance director's investment report as of February 28, 2019. Item number 11 is consideration of the monthly departmental reports for the month of February 2019. Item number 12 is acceptance of bids and approval of the contract with Central Contracting Services, Inc., in the amount of $2,845,591. Amendment number one, amending the work schedule and timing of road closures and replacing the special provisions section of contract and the subsequent bonds for the Robinson Street Waterline Replacement Project, Phase Two. Item 13 is a bid for the installation of pavement markings for the traffic control division. Item 14 is authorization for the purchase of children's early literacy panels from the TMC Furniture, Inc., in the amount of $139,750 for the Norman Public Library Central. Item 15 is Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Kirby Ranch, a variance in the minimum acreage requirement and minimum frontage requirement for lots 1 through 12, and acceptance of easements located at the southwest corner of East Robinson Street and 72nd Avenue Northeast. Item 16 is a contract with CPNY in the amount of $311,000 to provide engineering services related to survey, design, bidding, and construction management of the Flood Avenue Waterline Replacement from Rock Creek Road to Venture Drive. Item 17 is a contract with the Performing Arts Studio in the amount of $3,500 to provide hospitality services to the general public visiting the Santa Fe Train Depot. Item 18 is a resolution appropriating $56,261.24 from the Refunds Reimbursement Miscellaneous Risk Management Account received from the insurance companies and the responsible party to repair and replace traffic signal equipment damaged in traffic accidents. Item 19 is consideration of the city attorney's recommendation for approval of a court order plus court cost in the amount of $27,664.45 regarding Curtis Garrett Workers Compensation Commission case. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from the council on the consent docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Do you have to build up an electric charge, or what? Okay. Okay. All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously. This brings us to off-consent. Item number 20 is an ordinance granting special use for a school in R1 single-family dwelling district for 2323 Classon Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on the second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Kristin Hill, and I am the director of Children's House Monastery School here in Norman. Children's House is located at the corner of Lynn Street and Santa Fe, just north of Campus Corner. We share the block with St. John's Episcopal Church, just to give you a little further landmark. I'm here to speak with you this evening in regards to the rezoning of our proposed forever home at 2323 South Classon. We are asking that the site be rezoned from R1 to include a special use for a school. In 1971, Children's House opened our first classroom in the St. John's Episcopal Sunday School Building. Our number soon grew to allow us to begin renting the small white buildings that you see labeled as Santa Fe and Lynn Street. Santa Fe and Lynn Street have been the cornerstones of the Children's House program for over 40 years. We did eventually move back into the St. John's building in 2013 when we began our expansion into elementary. We currently house through 5th grade. Our primary programs, which consisted of two classrooms, are currently home to 40 3- to 6-year-old students with a ratio of 1 to 10. Our teachers at Children's House have a minimum of a bachelor's degree, and many hold advanced degrees ranging from masters in Montessori Education and Philosophy to PhDs in music, composition, and environmental toxicology. Each day, our incredible teachers share the love, spark the lifelong love of learning with our classrooms, and they share that love of learning for themselves. Our elementary program is currently home to 35 students from 1st through 5th grade with a ratio of 1 to 8 in each classroom. The tuition at Children's House ranges from $650 a month to $740 a month, depending on the length of the day for the child. All students are enrolled Monday through Friday. Children's House currently has a waiting list of 56 families with a maximum of 20 spots available each year. These families are interested in all levels of programming, including our elementary classrooms. Our elementary classrooms are currently filled from our primary classrooms. The proposed rezoning of the classroom property would allow us to open additional primary and lower elementary classrooms to accommodate this demand. Each level of classrooms at Children's House is comprised of a multi-age, three-year building curriculum. Families who choose Children's House are typically choosing us for a minimum of three years, and many stay with us through the upper elementary. Children's House currently has three car line times at 8:15, 2:15, and 3:15, each lasting about 15 minutes. Our car line is currently held inside of the St. John's Episcopal parking lot and does not currently run into the neighborhood streets. We're excited about the available area of the new proposed building and that we have many opportunities for landscaping and proposed increased school grounds. A wide variety of gardens, trees, natural elements, and play structures are a must. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Or comments that you want to make? Or comments that you want to make? Okay. Looks like I'm really glad that you're going to get a new facility for all those children. Sounds like a good thing.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Holman.
Just a few comments. A few months ago, when I started running for reelection, I did have a few neighbors mention this to me, that they did have some concern about increased traffic, but I think, from what I understand, those concerns have been addressed. I've had no neighbors reach out to me in at least two months, and I see no protest on here, so I'm real excited to see the improvements you guys make to this property, and look forward to, you know, all the children, you're going to be able to help more of them anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other final comments? The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. I'll vote to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Passes unanimously. Good for you. It's not always that easy. Item 21 is a contract, a memorandum of understanding concerning the University North Park Project Plan and Increment of Norman, the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, Norman Economic Development Coalition, University Town Center, JQH Norman Development, University North Park, UNP Realty Investors, University of Oklahoma Foundation, Republic Bank and Trust, and Immuno...I'm going to have trouble with it. Immunomicologics. Yes. Emmy. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I make an amendment first? I have requested to speak. Do I do it now?
She...Catherine has a presentation.
Oh, so after the presentation?
After the presentation.
Okay.
All right. Bryce, can you get my PowerPoint pulled up? There it is, sorry. Okay. All right, just to provide a little bit of background, in May 2006, the city adopted an ordinance creating the University North Park Tax Increment Finance, or TIFF, district. Along with that, they adopted a project plan setting forth authorized project costs up to $54.725 million that would be funded via the tax increment financing. So revenues generated within the district would go to pay for improvements within the district. The components in the project plan included traffic and roadway improvements, hotel conference center, and cultural facilities, Legacy Park, a lifestyle center, and economic development components. This has been implemented over time since 2006 through the adoption of a variety of contracts. We have six development agreements, a master operating agreement, master financing agreement, economic development agreement, and other related transactions. So I'm sure everyone has heard in recent months particularly that with our declining sales tax revenues overall, council has been expressing a desire to end the tax increment financing early so that all of the sales tax revenues generated in University North Park can go to the city's general fund. I want to be clear, the city can, under the Local Development Act, we can repeal the ordinance that established the TIFF district, and this agreement does not change that. Though there are outstanding contractual obligations that we cannot repeal or rescind all on our own, we have to work with the other parties to address those contractual obligations. And so council's direction has been to limit the city's exposure to any liability related to those contracts and work with the primary developers who are parties to all of those agreements, University North Park and University Town Center, to determine how to address the city's desire to end the TIFF early through contract amendments and any needed project plan amendments. Essentially, we have about, we think we'll have by the end of the fiscal year, about $15 to $17 million available for project costs. The project plan calls for about an additional $25 million in project costs, so we've got to figure out a way to address that delta. This memorandum of understanding is intended to provide a framework and a timeline to achieve the city's goals of ending that increment cooperatively. So the mayor listed all of the parties, and there are quite a few, but the primary parties you'll see referred to throughout the agreement are the city, the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, which the Councilmember Service trustees of, that's the TIFF Trust in the agreement, University Town Center, and University North Park. There are other listed parties in the agreement because to address all of these outstanding issues with the project plan and other agreements, we're going to need to amend some existing development agreements. And so we've got those parties listed, and we'll be working with them on appropriate amendments as we move forward. So the direction from council has been very clear. We want to end the increment and address outstanding contractual claims by June 30. So this agreement sets for some timeframes that help us get to that goal. We have to have the amendments to the project plan. Any amendments that are the result of these negotiations have to be ready to go to the Statutory TIFF Committee by May 15. And then any amendments to existing development agreements will have to be ready for council action by May 31. And again, this is all intended to reach that June 30 goal. The agreement calls for the status quo to be maintained during these negotiations. We are agreeing not to spend any UNP TIFF funds between now and the conclusion of these negotiations, which would be either when the MOU expires on June 30, when it's terminated, which I'll talk about in a minute, how that happens, or we've completed all of the project plan and contract amendments, which again, with the deadlines and timeframes in the agreement, that's also no later than June 30. The only thing that we've all agreed could be spent is some money that has already been obligated for a traffic and roadway project. So we're all in agreement that these negotiations will not hold that up. And that is the Robinson Crossroads Project. Other items to be considered include the impact to the Norman Public Schools budget of ending the TIFF early, and this was at council's direction. In a previous resolution, there's been some interest expressed in identifying what that is and whether and how we may address it. And also just addressing all the remaining authorized projects as called for in the project plan. Legacy Park has some components, obviously the park's done, but there are some other smaller components that haven't been completed. Lifestyle Center, economic development, there's a little bit that's not been completed there. Cultural Facility, this is where our Norman Forward projects come into play, as we're looking at some property options for some facilities in University North Park and the possible use of cultural facility funds for those. And then traffic and roadway improvements. The MOU automatically terminates on June 30 unless we all say, you know, we want to agree to an extension, we're really close, maybe, you know, we get it done the first meeting in July. Only if everyone agrees do we extend it. It can be terminated early if we reach an impasse, and I think the language in the agreement says if we reasonably determine that further discussions will be fruitless. So if we reach a point where we're not getting anywhere, we can terminate our participation in the MOU early. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Answer for the council, ask questions. Councilmember Wilson.
I don't know how to completely formulate my question, I don't think, so I'll just kind of...I am concerned about this MOU in and of itself, just having an MOU tying our elected body's hands for future decisions on this TIFF. So I guess, I don't know what the question is there exactly, but I need to feel better about that.
Okay. I've heard, and I think this is maybe what you're referring to also, is in Section 2.6A and B, there's some language in there that talks about what you can do under the Oklahoma Local Development Act. And in there, it recognizes explicitly that the city can repeal, modify, or amend the ordinance that the city adopted that establishes the increment district at any time by subsequent action of governing body. This does not change that. So it does not keep the council from being able to act if the discussions prove to be fruitless. Also, it recognizes, and this is where I've seen some confusion online at least, is that written agreements, contracts, cannot be unilaterally rescinded or modified. So contracts that we entered into with other parties, those are the things we have to work with the other parties to amend or change. And so the MOU is really designed to provide a framework for us to do that. I think, given the short timeframe, we'll know pretty quickly if we're getting anywhere with these negotiations, and, you know, the goal is obviously to get it all done by the end of this fiscal year, so we'll know how to move forward next fiscal year.
So I guess as a follow-up, is that appropriate to continue? Having an MOU, the fact that we, as a council body, have all said that we're interested in talking about this does not, in and of itself, create a situation where we've accidentally not negotiated in good faith because of us making a decision about ending the TIFF increment. Mike, is that clear? Is that clear?
Kind of. No, I think the MOU is clear that what the city's intention is, it's mentioned several times throughout, that the intention of the city is to end the increment early, so I don't think there's any surprise there to any of the parties that that's what the city is wanting to do. Additionally, there's some language in here that recognizes that the MOU provides a framework but does not in itself create any additional binding obligations other than trying to negotiate. I mean, if we aren't successful, we aren't successful, and council can move forward with other action as they deem appropriate.
Okay.
Catherine? No, this is the... The audience will have an opportunity to weigh in when the council has finished talking. Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of amendments to the MOU, but I will, I'm going to ask a question first, or I don't know which one I should be doing first, the amendment or the questions? Questions? Okay. Questions first, all right. So I, could you just explain, so we're all very clear, that if this is fruitless, this MOU is fruitless, by May 31, we can effectively exit, either party can exit the MOU, and then the steps going forward, since we have expressed as a council that we'd like to end the TIFF, we still have the ability to repeal the increment, and it would be the project plan that we have then to still work out.
None of this affects your ability legally to repeal the increment. What we're saying is we want to negotiate how that gets done in terms of eliminating projects from the project plan so that we aren't left with contractual obligations hanging out there. If it's unsuccessful and we decide to terminate our participation in it, the council can move forward with repealing the increment if that's what council decides to do.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, and then I'll move forward with the amendment. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to our MOU. I would move that Section 2, Number 1, Part C, on page 8 be stricken, and the remainder of the subsections be numbered accordingly. I have a second one, but I believe we have to vote on this first.
Yes.
Okay. My parliamentary procedure skills are...can you guys hear us back there? Okay.
Section 2, 1, C.
That was Section 2, 1, C, on page 8. I ask that it be stricken. And I guess I'll explain why while we're sifting through the document. I was uncomfortable with this little piece of it because I don't want there to be any leverage, or not leverage isn't the right word, but I don't want there to be any room for the increment to change, how much sales tax we're portioning currently. I don't want there to be any changes between now and the end of the TIFF. I just want it to, I don't want there to be potential to be, for it to be raised and more go toward the TIFF district. I want it all to go back to the general fund, and so I just don't want that conversation. It shouldn't be happening. There shouldn't be various apportionment rate scenarios, in my opinion. And that's why I was uncomfortable with it, and it didn't feel like it was necessary to be in the MOU. Okay? Any questions?
You don't have a second yet.
A second what?
Second. You don't have a second. I'll second it for her.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castor.
Y'all got my email.
This kind of goes to my question I had before, so I'll work here again. So we've had this MOU, councils looked at this MOU or similar MOU in two executive, two different, I guess this is for Catherine, two different executive sessions, right?
Yeah, we've discussed the MOU in terms of settlement of outstanding potential claims of litigation, yes, in two executive sessions, and through, I think I sent this one out through email.
Right, so this is the final product of working with the other parties, council negotiating back and forth over two different executive sessions, so any concerns that we've had, we've expressed previously in executive sessions. So this is kind of the work product of anything that we've, that they've agreed to.
This was, this is what was sent out last week on Wednesday, I think, based on the feedback we've received from council.
I'm not going to support that amendment or any other amendment, basically because we've already have an agreement, we did this with OGN, we changed, we had an agreement, we changed the agreement without the other parties agreeing to it. They've already agreed, it's my understanding they've agreed to this. Catherine, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're going to unilaterally change our negotiations we've had. We don't know whether they're going to accept it or not, which is just going to put further delay time going through this. And I don't see, I don't want to make, I don't want to delay this any more longer, to have them look at it, because all these parties have to have their attorneys look at it, that's going to take some more time, and that section, I think it is so minimal, I don't, I don't see the various appointment rates. I guess I'm just, I just, I think we have an agreement. We just need to vote for it up or down, so I'm not going to support this amendment.
Yeah, so as it stands, I don't think I can comfortably vote for the MOU. I'm okay with most of this. Again, I've expressed, like, I'm not comfortable with this section, and then there's another piece, I just want to make it explicitly clear that if this is, you know, fruitless by May 31, we will, you know, move forward with repealing the increment and then deal with the consequences later. But I feel like I'm asking pretty reasonably, yes, we had two executive sessions where we discussed this, but it was very short notice, a lot of the stuff we got, and I will be honest with you all, I'm not a lawyer, so it takes me a couple readings to get through some of this and completely understand it. It takes a lot of emails back and forth with Catherine and her sitting down and making it very clear for me. And so I asked for this because it's more clear to me, it makes me feel more comfortable.
I feel more uncomfortable every time we do these things within a few hours of us voting on them, when we've had the information, and I feel like that I'm more comfortable with what I know that we've vetted and that that's what our city attorney is telling us the agreement has been. So I feel more uncomfortable changing it. What, Catherine, what's the substantive difference by doing that?
This section just says that the city, the TIFF Trust, which is also you all as trustees, and the UNP Development Partners, that's UTC and UNP, will undertake a comprehensive review of the current status of the TIFF, and then it has a list of things that that includes, and it includes how much time would be required to generate sufficient funds to pay remaining authorized project costs based on various apportionment rate scenarios. This is just one of the things that they were wanting to look at.
I don't have a problem with that. Any other council comments? Any comments from the audience?
About the amendment. About the amendment.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, the amendment. Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about, the amendment.
Can, can we get you to read, I'm looking at Section 2, and I'm not clear exactly what it is that you want to strike. Can you, can we get that read? What, what the change, the amendment is? Okay, you want to read it?
Sure, and this is in subsection Roman numeral 2. Purpose and contemplated actions under comprehensive review. It says, "The city, the TIF Trust, and the UMP Development Partners will undertake a comprehensive review of the current status of the UMP TIF, including List A, B, and then C," is what Councilmember Scott is wanting to strike. And that says, "The amount of time that would be required to generate sufficient funds to pay remaining authorized project costs based on various apportionment rate scenarios."
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Judith Maude. I'm a retired law professor and taught contracts for many years. A memorandum of understanding is not a contract. It is a, an offer, basically, by one party, saying, "How about it if we consider these changes that I'm proposing?" And it doesn't become a contract until it is accepted by the other party. And if there's a good-faith dispute about it, then the offeree, if you will, the person who, the party who receives the offer, is free to say, "Hey, we're going to scuttle these negotiations," with no liability whatsoever. Now, I did not hear in this, or see anything in what was presented, that OU Foundation was a party to this. We all know that there have been some tense conversations about OU Foundation. I don't know any of these other entities, but I think the same general legal principles apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment from the council on the amendment. Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend, do we want to read it again, or is everybody comfortable with what we're amending? Striking Section 2, 1, C. You may cast your votes. You may just ask, ask anyone. Oh, okay.
And the motion passes by a vote of five to three.
This brings us back to the voting on the memorandum of understanding. Councilmember, you have another amendment?
Yes, but I also understand how uncomfortable everybody is with making amendments behind the dais. I just, and Catherine made it clear for me, I actually had a list of them. Catherine and I spoke, our city attorney, and I spoke earlier, and she did make it very clear that my concerns were addressed. My concern is just wanting to make it explicitly clear that if this is fruitless by May 31st, we can exit at any time, any party, if we don't come to a mutually acceptable agreement, and we can proceed however council and our partners see fit. So I will refrain at this time from making any further amendments. I want to thank the rest of you who did vote in favor for allowing that, because I was uncomfortable moving forward otherwise, and then thanking our partners as well for being willing to work with us. And I'm...
Okay, that brings us back to voting on the memorandum of understanding. Are there any more comments or questions from the council?
Mary Francis, 850C, Cardinal Creek. On the RBT debt, the Republic Bank debt, can I find out how much that is and what effect paying that off would have on the procedures, on the, on the funding and on the funds available?
The Republic Bank debt that's referred to in the agreement is debt that NEDC, Norman Economic Development Coalition, entered into to develop 60 acres in University North Park, and not only acquire it, but put the infrastructure in, so they would be shovel-ready should a business desire to locate there. That, they owe about three, and I'm not going to get it down to the dollars and cents, but it's about 3.1, 3.2 million dollars left. We have an economic development component part of the project plan. Those funds have been used as extras, as security for that loan. We, two years ago, I think, in April, paid off the acquisition loan, and so what's left now is the infrastructure loan. And so that debt will, will need to be addressed through these agreements as, as we deal with the economic development component.
Okay, thank you.
I want to start out with a question, which is basically just, I didn't hear anyone on the council say anything about what they saw the positive point of this MOU was supposed to be. I understand that everyone has been hedging, saying basically this doesn't tie our hands at all, but I haven't heard anyone suggest why it would be a good thing to have this memorandum of understanding. And it seems to me that there's at least one potential drawback that hasn't been addressed from the dais yet, which was basically that the Section 1 locks in a sort of narrative about the TIF that might prove useful to, you know, more or less allocute to. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how this would work, but if we pass this MOU, it seems to me that we're at least in some sense signing on to the narrative in Section 1. And I want to suggest that, and I haven't had the opportunity to go over it with a fine-tooth comb, but I'm not really sure that that's a very useful thing for the city to do when our sort of TIF counterparties, especially the sort of UMP and, what is the, UTC, got to get my acronyms right, are, are in favor of this proposal. It seems to me that the narrative was at least in part written for their benefit. I am a little bit worried about giving up one of Norman's best bargaining chips in this situation, too, which is the, the capacity to sort of change the facts on the ground before any legal things sort of hit the courts. And in particular, the changing the project plan seems to me to be something that Norman should be willing to consider quite apart from what our TIF counterparties do. It's not, we're legally allowed to do it, it's something that very well could influence the way in which the negotiations go. So it seems to me that the drawback of this proposal is that it, you know, puts our hand on the table in a way that may not help the city of Norman very much, and really to no effect, because as has been pointed out several times, it looks as though this memorandum of understanding is very easy for either side to walk through. Once Norman's signature is on it, and if we run into any difficult negotiations down the, down the line, we would at least have to come back here to change the MOU. Our sort of counterparties wouldn't, and they've got our signature on the document that basically spells out their tale of the TIF. So my suggestion is just vote no. We're, we can negotiate with people, we've already got contracts with them, it's not as though they're going to want to walk away if we say to them, "Hey, how are we going to disentangle this process?" And then one final note, this is why you don't do tax increment financing in a place that's likely to grow anyway. It's very legally entangling, and it doesn't really work very well. So, you know, forewarned is forearmed the next time. Thank you.
Motion on the, what, oh, Councilmember Scott.
I'm almost done. Can we, can, would we be able to negotiate the project plan without the MOU?
Yeah, I mean, the project plan amendments are going to have to go to the statutory review committee. That's something that would, that the city could do on its own, but because of the development agreements, it's smart, it makes sense to do that together with UMP and UTC, so that the development agreements would be impacted by the project plan amendments are also addressed at the same time.
Well, I have a follow-up to that, then, because we did call upon the statutory review committee back in November with the resolution, and that actually, they never met, and they kept postponing. So with this MOU guarantee, then, that they will meet, and if they don't by May 31st, then we, again, will just take action to repeal the increment?
If, if amendments are ready for the statutory review committee, they have to be done by May 15th, so that they can review them and get their process done in time for June 30th.
But as of right now, they, we don't have a date for them to meet, because we would need amendments ready, and that is what the, our partners and the city would work on together.
That's what we'll be working on, in addition to development agreements.
And if they don't meet by May 15th, then they won't be ready by May 31st. Is that correct?
If we don't have agreements ready by May 15th, it will be difficult for them to meet by May 31st.
Okay, so then really we're looking at amendments, or they need to be made by the end of April for them to have met and agreed upon them by...
The agreement says we have to have the final project plan amendments ready to go by May 15th.
For them to view, or for...
For them to schedule a meeting and have them review.
So then they would have to meet between the 15th and the 31st? Or really before the 30, like, far before the 31st?
Yeah, they'll have to meet pretty quickly, because then we'll have to get to council to do the public hearings required for project plan amendment.
Okay, so they have to, they have to be ready by May 15th, and then have met probably within a week, and then if they're not finalized and they're not mutually agreeable by the 31st, then we can exit the MOU. Cool, thank you.
It's not a contract.
Right, I know, it's just a memorandum of understanding, I understand, I just, there is concern about it, and so I want to make it very clear for myself, again, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, so I want to make it clear for myself and everyone here, what the timeline is and what the process is. I'm new, I've been on council for almost a year.
Councilmember Wilson.
Um, wow, this is, I am, I'm sad that we're this late in the game, and that we're now doing an MOU instead of just, the goal was to, to end the increment, and I know that this just makes it messy for me, not a lawyer, also. I realize that it's not a contract, I understand that completely, and I do appreciate the work that Ms. Walker has done, and I also happen to like the, putting the, some of the Norman Forward projects over in that area, I really like that idea, I think it's a great idea for our community. I am not comfortable with the MOU, I'm not comfortable with some of the stuff, and the beginning with the history, not because of Dr. Ellis, I was already not comfortable with that, Dr. Ellis. The language is concerning, I, I know I've been assured several times that our hands aren't tied, but I have big concerns, and having gone down this road a few times with this particular group of community partners, it's, it's scary, so I'm going to not support it tonight. Sorry.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. First to answer your question, ma'am, and thank you so much for coming tonight. UMP is the foundation. So that, yeah, so that's, they are involved in this negotiation, and so I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Walker for all the hard work she's put in on this. And the analogy that I've used to describe this process is that, and, and what she has done so well, I think, is gone to all of the parties, and she's brought them to the table. And, and in effect, my analogy is everyone's decided to buy a house. Someone's deciding to sell a house, someone's deciding to buy a house. Now, we have to get that paperwork done between now and May 15th. Okay? So they're going to be working diligently, and I understand that's a really fast timeframe, you know, but all of the parties have agreed as that is a goal, with the idea of closing on the house by June 30th. So that's the analogy, you know, and that's where the contracts fall into place. It's a very, I don't know if there, I defer to Councilmember Scott, but she and I both were, as far as the end the TIF movement, if you want to call it, as instrumental in that as anyone, so there was no one as passionate about it as myself. But Ms. Walker has been very deftly negotiating on our behalf in good faith, in doing what I consider to be a very good job, in bringing everyone to the table in good faith. And as I have had discussions with other council, good faith is an important component in this, in event this ends up in court. And so I don't think anybody wants it to end up in court, but there's no doubt in my resolution that if that's the direction it needs to go, that's the direction we need to go, but...
May I respond, please?
Yes, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
My train of thought.
Got it.
But, so anyway, I'm very much in favor of this resolution. I, I don't believe it ties our hand inappropriately, or any way that prevents us from going ahead and moving forward, to end this TIF, just as it doesn't keep them from suing us in the event we do that. So there's no one that's particularly bound by any of this, in the event it falls apart, it's just a good-faith agreement to go out together and buy a house, have the paperwork done by the 15th, and close on it before the 30th. Sure.
Councilmember...
The city's accusation...
Well, I'm sorry.
Dr. Maude, you're really not supposed to be speaking from the audience.
I'm sorry, would you like me up there?
Sorry, sorry.
Councilmember Hickman.
Since I've been sitting in this chair, I've always said that I feel like I am the voice for the people that I represent. I have been listening to the people in Ward 4, and the small business owners in Ward 4, and the unanimous feedback that I have received on this MOU has been in opposition to the MOU. And as an attorney, I do have concerns about this MOU. I respect the fact that my fellow council members probably have some differing opinions, and I respect the democratic process of what we're going to vote on tonight, and the hard work of our staff, but I will be a no on this MOU.
Councilmember Clark.
I appreciate staff's work. I think I'm, I mentioned a lot during running for mayor that I'm ready to set a new tone for our community, and how we come together and actually have conversations instead of bullying each other around and threatening lawsuits. So I'm very excited about the work, but I think we've made it very clear where we stand. But we have to start with conversations, we have to start with talking with each other. So I fully intend to support this tonight, so thank you very much for all of your work on this. And for the councilmembers voting yesterday, I really appreciate your support as well. It's time for us to come together as a team to face some of these serious issues ahead of us. And for those of you voting no, I respect your opinion, and I hope we can come to those wonderful unanimous moments that we've tasted before recently. I know that we can do this.
Catherine and our legal staff have worked very hard on this. She has followed our, our direction through the whole process. She has had good conversations with UTC, UMP. This is our decision to end the TIF, and we need to work with our partners to do it in the most legally responsible and financially responsible way. in the most legally responsible and financially responsible way. There are, this is not just about the legal part. This is also about the financial part. And it's very important that we get this right. We're on the right track. We, we have an outline of how we're going to go through this process. We've got a timeline. We've been very specific about this. If we don't vote for this tonight, then where are we going to be? So we're going to be back redoing an MOU or something else. We've got a process. Let's move forward. We have a deadline. We need to get to the statutory committee. So, motion on the floor is to approve the contract. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion to approve, as amended, passes by a vote of six to two, voting against Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Hickman.
Item 22 is a resolution. This also has to do with, uh, the MOU. It also has to do with the unwinding of the UNP TIF. This resolution is expressing the desire of council to enter into binding agreements by June 30th, 2019, providing for early termination of the University North Park increment finance district sales tax and ad valorem tax increment, directing the city manager to direct the staff to negotiate with related development partners, NEDC, and other community partners to reach a mutually agreeable settlement of all outstanding matters related to the UNP and directing the city manager to prepare the fiscal year ending 2020 budget based on the goal of sales tax and ad valorem tax increments ending on June 30th, 2019. This is an item that was postponed from our March 21st meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to reject.
Motion to adopt, I don't know.
Motion to oppose.
Adopt second? How do we do that?
He, he was first, he said motion to reject.
Oppose? I oppose that?
Then you don't second it.
Does Council, does Councilmember Castleberry have a second on his motion to reject?
And my only reason is it's irrelevant from what we just did.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to reject and a second. So, does Catherine make? Councilmember Castleberry.
Okay, thank you. I just want to explain, the only reason I, I want to reject is we just did an MOU that basically says what we're going to do. This has some conflicting language with the MOU. So there's really no reason to have it. And I can't, I don't want to postpone it, I don't want to table it. There's no point in it, so I might as well want to get a vote on it. So I'm, I'm just going to vote reject it. My other problem with it is the last sentence that says, directing the city manager to prepare the budget as if we're going to do it. You can't tell, uh, that's, it's irresponsible to prepare a budget based on, we think we're going to get something done by June 30th. That's our plan, that's our goal. Now, if we're going to do that, then I would, I guess I'll do it later, but make the moment, I want to prepare a budget with or without. That would be responsible. You know, this passes on June 25th, June 30th. It passes July 2nd. Then you amend the budget for the revenue once it comes in. But this is no different than us maybe a year or so ago saying, hey, the Wayfair case is going to the Supreme Court. We think they're going to win and so therefore we're going to budget a use tax to be bigger next year. You don't budget that way. You budget on facts. And so that's why I'm making the motion reject. So I think it's, the resolution, because we have the MOU, is now irrelevant.
Councilmember Wilson.
As a counterargument to Councilmember Castleberry's well-stated point, um, I would say that it is relevant because there's some loose language in that MOU that scares us. And we want to make darn sure that everybody knows where we're going with this bus. So I do think it's relevant. I actually am a little bit uncomfortable though with that budget preparation, but I do trust our city manager and our finance director to take those, that into consideration with the fact that we are in flux with that, hopefully.
Councilmember Scott.
Uh, I have a question for our city attorney. Does the resolution in any way affect the MOU as far as, does it limit our abilities to do, to proceed with the MOU?
Um, I don't, section 10 and 11 are certainly, um, of the resolution are certainly, they certainly fit into what was in the MOU. The MOU, of course, didn't address the budget issues because that's really the city's issue. So it doesn't conflict with it.
It doesn't conflict with the MOU at all?
I don't think, I don't think the budget preparation conflicts with the MOU because the MOU doesn't address that.
The resolution itself, does it in any way conflict with the MOU?
I don't think section 12 conflicts with the MOU because the MOU does not address the budget preparation.
So, it's okay, thank you.
So what does the resolution do that the?
That's really the only difference is, is directing the city manager to prepare the city's budget based on that goal rather than waiting, as Councilmember Castleberry suggested, until the project plan amendments are adopted and amending the budget at that time.
Well, that's the part of it that, I don't really see what it does, but that's the part of the resolution that bothers me, is the direction on the budget.
I would have a follow up then. Can I ask a follow up? Because we do intend, is it okay? We do intend to have the increment ended by June 30th. So I think it is appropriate to prepare the budget with the increment going back into the, or the sales tax back into our general fund. That's a fact. I mean, that's what we're aiming towards.
Something you may all consider, um, if I may, Mayor. When you adopt the budget, um, we can provide some language. I know Anthony and I, I think, have talked about this preliminarily about, uh, when the increment is ended, this money will go here. And that way you've covered all your bases. You've got a budget and then you have an amendment that's conditional on adoption or repeal of the TIF ordinance that automatically would amend the budget at that time.
Okay, thank you.
So then it would be like Councilmember Castleberry said, where we had to have both. Because if you're going to, if you're going to change it when, when it ends, because we don't know exactly how much money it's going to be. That, that's one of the problems. It can end, but is it going to be 3 million 200,000? Or is it going to be 4 million 100,000? Or is it going to be 1 million? Yeah, I mean, we don't know exactly how much the money is going to be. And we, because we don't even know how much will be for the schools. Council, okay, who's on the board? Councilmember Wilson.
Well, I think it, it, I, I mean, I, I get where everybody's going with this, but it does say with a goal of it ending. So we have very professional staff that are very smart. And every year they, they build into contingencies into our budget. Every year they take into all kinds of factors. So that we are just telling them, hey, we are very serious about this ending. So you might want to prepare for that. I don't think anybody, anything in here says that it has to be 3 million added dollars or 5 million added dollars or anything. It just says be prepared because this is our goal. So I think it's appropriate. And it puts a bookend on this MOU for me.
Councilmember Scott.
May I ask a question of our finance director? Anthony, I ask, um, I feel like in our conversations, we do have projections and estimates of what, I mean, I'm pretty sure we've had these conversations in executive session. So I don't know what I'm allowed to say, but maybe since this is what's, we're voting on this tonight. I mean, uh, we do have projections of what is in the, in the fund balance now and what's going to be collected and the, as far as the schools are concerned. Correct?
Oh, the last part of what you just, I'm Anthony Francisco, the finance director. And, and yes, the budget is built on projections. What I would read this resolution to do is to give our financial staff a direction about one of those projections, which would be revenues from, um, the sales taxes and ad valorem taxes collected in University North Park and where they would be deposited in the fiscal year 20 budget. That's just a projection. As Councilmember Castleberry says, um, here is a projection that's based on something that is not factual yet. But we can certainly make that projection, present that to the council when you adopt the budget with the understanding that something in this budget may be hanging out there. Now, the last part of what you just said about what is in there for the schools and that sort of a projection is much more iffy in my own mind because that's a whole separate part of negotiations that would be hopefully done by June the 30th, but may not be. Um, so, so the direction that I see in the resolution, prepare the budget as if the sales tax and ad valorem tax apportionments have ended by June the 30th is clear. And, and we can certainly base the budget that way. And we can do an A and B budget, if you will, that would make that projection or not.
So are you basically saying that all you're going to do is, is put it in the fund balance? Or you're not, you're not going to try to budget it out in different departments?
We would not, we would budget the revenue as if it were being deposited to the general fund and the capital fund.
You just put it in the general fund.
And the capital fund. Remember that we're apportioning capital sales tax as well.
So really it's not that big a deal.
It's a big assumption, you know? And, and we would certainly hope that this assumption that's being made comes to pass.
Can I ask? I'm just saying, that's, that's not, you're, you're not, and, and I was taking it the wrong way. I was really taking it like, we think we're going to have this much money and where all are we going to budget? But I'm hearing what you're saying and that sounds fine. Uh, councilmember, whoever, Joe, I mean, sorry, Dr. Carter.
So let me get it clear in my mind. Because I was under the impression you present one budget, you know? And we voted on one budget. So are you proposing that we would have two budgets?
You would only, you would only adopt one of them. Um, but we can.
You have two options to consider at the time that we vote on the budget, but we have to choose one budget.
Yes, sir.
So if we choose one budget and the end of the TIF, if we choose the budget that allows for the revenue from the TIF, let's say, and then it doesn't come to fruition by the 30th, then we will have to amend that budget mid-year or what, or, or consequently, it's the opposite. If we, if we adopt a, a budget that is not allowing for any new revenue from ending the TIF, and then we do end the TIF, then we adopt, we change the budget at mid-year to adjust for that, correct? Is that, or how, how does this, explain the process?
Well, the process, you know, this could be overly complicating your answer. But just understand that the TIF apportionment is, is a question of what fund it's deposited to.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we make the budget based on the assumption that the TIF apportionments will continue to be deposited to the TIF fund, and then the apportionment to the TIF fund ends, now you would have budgeted more money in the TIF fund that is being deposited there. But the council could then transfer that money from the TIF fund to the general fund and the capital fund. So, you know.
How long before, I mean, we could do that the next month or?
The next month or six months later.
At any point, we could then apportion that money out of the TIF fund into.
Or vice versa, yes.
Or vice versa. But it seems kind of irrelevant.
It, it is, I don't want to, and that's why I didn't want to overly complicate the answer.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So Anthony. We make the budget and we say it's going to go into the TIF fund. TIF ends, so the, the apportionment ends. Will the money not go into the general fund? Regardless of what our budget says, it's going to go where it's supposed to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's irrelevant to prepare the budget like that? It's going to happen anyway.
You want to prepare the budget based on the best assumptions that you can make. And, and if I'm directed to prepare the budget as if there was no apportionment to the TIF fund, I will. But what we're talking about here are the ramifications of what we decide to adopt.
Did you prepare the budget assuming the stormwater would pass?
No.
Well, that's, that's, that's our goal. That's council's goal, we all, you know, we voted for that to pass.
That's a very good analogy.
So why are we not preparing the budget based on that goal?
That's a very good analogy.
I'm just confused.
Well, because we haven't been directed.
Oh, we don't know it's going to happen?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, my, my motion to reject is basically just to, to do that. If, if it, if it fails and we go forward, then I will make a, a second motion to, on item 12, to prepare. If, if we're going to prepare a budget with this stuff in there, then I want to know what's the, what's the first, what's the first thing coming out of the budget if it doesn't happen? I mean, we know what's going, you know, last thing comes into budget. If you're going to increase a budget by this much, great. If it doesn't happen, what are you taking out? I would rather take the, the approach of this is what our budget is. And then it, then we get this, this also gives us the goal to get it done. Add it to the budget. We can, July 10th, have a special meeting and adjust the budget because we know what those items are. So I think it's just, it's a process. I'm just looking at more of a process of the proper way to prepare a fiscally responsible budget.
Anybody else? Thank you, Anthony. Okay, we are. Any comments from the audience on the motion to reject?
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. Um, it, it seems to me that there's a point to be made on both sides that I haven't heard yet. So on the one side, um, I think, given the course of action that you took last issue on the MOU means that it's less likely that we will actually get the, the TIF, you know, Ts crossed, Is dotted in time. So there might be some concerns of the sort that, uh, Mr. Francisco talked about, putting together a budget. So I do think it would take some special effort. Uh, but on the other hand, um, leaving section 12 in this resolution actually does a service that I think might do, undo some of the damage from the MOU, which is to say that'll put some pressure on our sort of counterparties in this, this, uh, this deal to actually do something because they'll know you need to get your budget stuff together. So I mean, it has the sort of strategic function of really binding yourself to the mass to do something about reallocating the funds by the end, or I guess it's roughly the end of this fiscal year, right? It's not quite, but, uh, so, uh, I think on balance it's probably a better idea to go ahead and adopt this resolution, although it actually doesn't do very much. Uh, so I, I hope that you will vote against the motion to reject. And then when someone makes the motion to, uh, to accept, that you'll vote for that. Thank you.
Any other counsel comments? Okay, motion on the floor is to reject the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Okay, I just want to make it perfectly clear. A yes vote means you're voting for rejection. A no vote means you're voting against rejection. Okay.
Did something, what? Oh, oh my gosh. Okay.
A motion requires five votes to pass regardless of how many councilmembers are present when the vote takes place. This vote is four to three for rejection and three voting for rejection. The motion fails because it doesn't have five votes.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt. Instead of motion to. Instead of motion to adopt and a second, Sareeta and Alex. All right, questions from the council regarding this item? No. Councilmember Castleberry, I'm, I'm sorry, the board is not working up here, so I'm having a little trouble telling who wants to talk unless they wave their hands.
Then I'd also, I'd like to make an amendment to section 12 that says, that directs the city manager to prepare the city budget with the goal of ending the TIF and detailing what those changes are. Ie., are you going to put it all just to the general fund? Are you going to put it at salary? You know, tell us what changes you're going to make because of this.
Oh, I seconded it.
Any comments? We have a motion and a second to amend the resolution. Any more comments from the council? Comments from the audience or questions? Final comments from the council. This is to make some changes, to add specificity to what we're asking the finance director and the city manager to do. Okay, if there's no more comments or questions, the motion on the floor is to amend the resolution. You want to, is everybody comfortable with the amendment? You may cast your votes on the amendment.
Our votes have been amended, passed unanimously.
Okay. Now, we are back to the amended resolution. Any comments about the amended resolution from the council, from the audience? Would you like to get up and say that, Mary Francis, or are you good? Okay, we're, we're good too. All right, council members, you may cast your vote. We're voting on the resolution now as amended.
The, the amendment on the floor is to direct the city manager to prepare the budget in stating where the funds will be budgeted. Is that correct?
We voted on the amendment. We're voting on the whole resolution.
You're right, you're right. Sorry. I was just trying to answer a question, I'm sorry.
Okay. We better vote before we forget what we're voting on.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're, we're still not, okay.
The motion to adopt the resolution as amended passes by a vote of six to one, voting against Councilmember Castleberry.
This brings us to miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Remarks should be directed to the council. It did to five minutes or less.
Jane Crumpley, 423 Elm. I want to give a shout out and a thank you to Mayor Miller, to our interim city manager, and certainly to Sean O'Leary's hardworking staff for the corrections that were made to James Garner and the intersection of Apache and Sims I could see. So, Robert, I did not have to take an alternate route. But I do thank you so much and thank them for their, for their hard work. I know they don't have enough to do.
The staff does the heavy lifting for sure.
Good evening. I'm Shane Dodson. I live in Ward Eight, and this is the fourth time I've been before the city council. Proverbs 29:2 reads, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when a wicked man rules, the people groan." Everybody has a final authority, a final arbiter of truth, if, as it were. What is your final authority when it comes to morality and knowledge? Answer that question and I'll tell you who your God is. Myself and others have been criticized for bringing religion into this civic realm, but ladies and gentlemen, religion is inescapable because everybody has an ultimate authority. My ultimate authority is the scriptures, and God's word says, "The difference between the happiness and the misery of a community is whether those in civil authority are ruling righteously or wickedly." I continue to encourage you to take that into consideration as you make decisions and vote as the city council. Now, in the past, as we brought up the local, state, and federal sin of abortion on demand, a common objection goes along these lines. Why are you talking about this to the city? The city can't do anything about abortion. Go to the state capitol, go to the supreme court, et cetera. Now, there are some assumptions that are front-loaded into these objections, such as Roe v. Wade is a federal law. It isn't. And that the lesser magistrates, which is you, ladies and gentlemen, simply can't do anything about the abortions that are going on within their city and county limits. Well, you can. Roswell, New Mexico recently declared their city as a sanctuary city for the unborn, even though their actions were a response to a move by the state to decrease limits on abortion, but they based their decision on an absolute right taught in the scriptures and codified in our nation, for our nation in the Declaration of Independence, the foundational and declared right to life. What will ultimately become of this action by the Roswell City Council? I have no idea. You might think it's an empty gesture. I call it a good beginning. I call it a righteous action. I do have a question, though. Are those saying that the city can't do anything about abortion really want to do anything about abortion in the first place? Are the same people that are telling me to go to the state capitol and to the supreme court to talk about abortion, are they going to back any play against this so-called reproductive right? Of course, they won't. What I've heard from certain city council members sitting in front of me right now is that abortion is a women's rights issue, and to even broach the subject in front of a city council is inappropriate at best and tantamount to hate speech at worst. So, the, so the issue isn't whether or not the city of Norman can do anything about abortion. The issue is that the city of Norman doesn't want to do anything about the killing of preborn children. But what about all the unwanted children in our foster care systems? What about adoption? These are good questions. What about those? How about the city council sit down with several of us from local churches here in Norman and discuss making adoption more affordable and easy? Not that this has anything to do with whether or not the murder of preborn children is moral or not, but my church, Christ the King Presbyterian Church, has a group that stands outside of the local abortion clinic every week, lovingly pleading with mothers and fathers not to kill their baby and even offering to adopt their baby right then, right there. We, as a church, have committed to do what we can to help mothers who find themselves in difficult and seemingly impossible situations, them and their babies. Do you know of a woman who is seeking an abortion? Tell her about Christ the King Presbyterian Church. Tell her to contact our church. Tell her we'll do what we can to be, to meet her needs. Tell her we have several families in our church who will gladly adopt her baby instead of seeing him or her destroyed by the local abortionist. Now, having said that, abortion is a national atrocity. Snuffing out innocent life is no way to plan parenthood. But abortion, like any other sin, can be forgiven in Jesus Christ and in Him alone. That's why we preach the gospel and believe the message of Jesus Christ to be at the center of any discussion about abortion. Two thousand years ago, Jesus Christ came to this earth, fully God, fully man, lived a perfect life so that He could die a substitutional death on the cross. Who did He die for? Guilty sinners like you and me. Then He rose again to new life, and it's because He rose again that the message of Jesus is good news. It's good news to know that our sin has been paid for and death has been defeated. So, while we call on you to step up and rule righteously when it comes to preborn children being killed every day under your watch, we first and foremost call on you to repent of your sins, to see and understand that your sin separates you from a holy God and loving God, and to turn from your sin and place your faith, trust, and belief in the risen Jesus Christ. Then God will give you a desire to rule righteously and to protect life at all stages. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Mr. Dodson, with all due respect, I and many others object to your use of this forum for the purpose of getting it on videotape and to be used to buttress a shaky case now pending in the federal district court of Oklahoma, of, of Oklahoma City. To the extent that non-residents are present, I would suggest that you lack standing to be here because you're not taxpayers of the city of Norman. The, as I've told you personally, Mr. Dodson, the proper forum in which to bring these claims is to go to the state legislature, which is much more amenable to your concerns, and you're likely to win there. So, those of us who have been careful observers of this process are not seeing any people standing, except for perhaps Christ the King Presbyterian Church, have not been seeing people standing in line to adopt children or to become foster parents. And that's of great concern because it suggests frustration of purpose, using the contract term. So, I would respectfully ask that you take your concerns, Mr. Dodson, to the state legislature and not usurp the valuable time and videotape resources of the city of Norman. I suggest that your efforts to do so are frivolous. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Mackenzie Dodson and I am 12 years old. I am the daughter of Shane and Tammy Dodson, and I came here to talk to you about the issue of men not being able to talk about abortion just because they're men. I think that every man should be able to talk about abortion, especially if that man is a Christian. I want to defend my dad, but I also want to defend all of the other Christian men out there who are fighting to end abortion, including my dad's friend Brady. I want all of you to ponder this issue, and I pray that at least some of you will help me in this issue. Thank you for your time and God bless you all.
Good evening. My name's Tammy Dodson. I'm in Ward Eight. So, ironically, some, or many on the council seem to be judging our motives for being here. We've continually come to you in a peaceable way, asking to be heard out. Why? We want to help protect women, all women, and not just women of childbearing age, but little women in the womb. You say you're for women's rights, but what about the right of little women in the womb? So, see, this presents a problem. Either you're biased, you know, it's okay to protect some women but not others, or you're believing the lie that killing babies in the womb is your right. So, abortion is still taking an innocent life, and all the reasons to abort have been debunked and are invalid archaic arguments. It's been proven that you who believe this lie are suppressing the truth in your unrighteousness. Your conscience tells you it's wrong, and yet you still believe the lie. I'm here again to alert you to this fallacy. You don't know my motive, but I'm here to tell you it is out of love. As a follower of Christ, we're to love the Lord and to love our neighbor as ourself. That includes you, as well as the preborn and anyone else in our sphere of influence. We're to obey, to obey God, not man. So, it's a loving thing to tell someone the truth. The truth, truth is, we need to stop abortion in Norman before it gets to infanticide, like New York, or gender side. We don't think it'll happen in America as it does in other countries like China or India. It can and it will if we do not take action as Roswell, New Mexico. So, Mayor, you've said, you know, what can we do? And it's, I think it's a valid question. And so, we had the resolution, it's Resolution 1928, states a resolution in support of the unborn, whereas the Declaration of Independence, the founding document of the U.S. states, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, life being the first of these declared rights. And whereas recently, as March 2017, the American College of Pediatricians published an abstract stating, "The predominance of human biological research confirms that human life begins at conception, fertilization. At fertilization, the human being emerges as a whole genetically distinct, individuated, zygotic, living human organism, a member of the species Homo sapiens, needing only the proper environment to grow and develop. The difference between the individual is its adult state and its zygotic state is one of form, not nature. Whereas each and every innocent human life is unique and precious to God, whereas human life begins at the moment of conception and continues uninterrupted until the moment of natural death, whereas innocent human life must always be protected and preserved, whereas the protection of all human life is important to the people of the city of Roswell." The New Mexico legislator, legislature is currently considering legislation to diminish the limitations on abortions. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council as the governing body of the city of Roswell, New Mexico, that declare that innocent human life, including fetal life, must always be protected, and society must protect those who cannot protect themselves. Be it further resolved by the city council that it declares opposition to any diminution by the New Mexico legislature of the limitations on abortion. Be it further resolved that the city council honors the rights of healthcare providers to object on moral grounds to performing abortions and opposes any regulation or law seeking to violate that right. So, that's what happened. That was February 28, 2019, just not even a month ago in Roswell, New Mexico. So, um, I mean, we're here for a reason. There's a purpose why we continue to come and will, you know, continue to do that because it's happening. So, please reconsider. We have copies of this if you want to look at it. We can email them to you if you're willing. Okay, thank you.
Husky 3615, Chatham Court, Ward Three. I'm not here to talk about mosquitoes, so you don't have to worry about that. Actually, what I'm here to talk about is the fact that in 1950, I participated on a softball team that was sponsored by the city of Norman. And in 1951, on a, a little league, it wasn't called that then, a baseball team, and we actually won the state championship. The team that played before us, the year before us, also won the state championship, and the members of those two teams then later took the Norman High School team to the finals in the 1956 season. So, we were pretty good baseball players. Why? Because we practiced and because the city of Norman provided for an area for us to play, Andrew's part, coaches who were actually professional coaches in that they were coaches at high schools or junior highs around the area. All right, that's my preface. Here's what I'm thinking, and this reply, this has to do with the memorandum of understanding, section two, number seven, having to do with mitigation of adverse impact on Norman public schools. One of the things that the city is doing for the Norman public schools is they are providing for wonderful sports areas that are utilized by children who go to the Norman public schools. Rather than having to do it, the school systems, the city's doing it. And they provide, they're going to provide a really nice swimming area for competitive swimming, something that the city or the school system doesn't do and apparently doesn't even think about doing. So, my thought is that in you're looking at mitigation of the removal of TIF funds as an effect on the school system, you might consider how much Norman Forward is actually providing for the Norman public school system in terms of the sports venues that are then used. utilized by the children who then become the active participants, especially at the high school level. After all, as I remember reading the paper, we had one swimmer who set some records. Well, you're going to do more of that with this Norman Forward, and I think that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue. I actually want to piggyback on what Dr. Professor Husky just said. And that is, when we're looking at the impact on Norman Public Schools, I've looked at the stuff provided by the school district, the stuff provided by our TIF consultants, the stuff that my husband has done, and I'm not sure I've seen the actual right impact. And so what we need to see is the impact of the increment on the school funding with and without, just the same as we're talking about with the budget. And I'm not convinced that I've seen the accurate, I think, I'll give my husband the benefit of the doubt, that his is pretty close. He hasn't convinced me yet that it's perfect. And my research suggests that the actual financial impact is much smaller than we guessed because nobody's been taking into account the sinking fund impact. They're giving up all of the sinking fund. And so I think if we want to have a transparent, informed discussion about making NPS whole, then we need to have good numbers on that, and I just don't think we've seen that yet.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. As some of you know, Cynthia and I are working on some research in this area. And in particular, we're writing a paper on tax increment financing in the state of Oklahoma that we presented some preliminary reports on two weekends ago at the Oklahoma State Education Summit. And I was just going to send this to you and I will, and this is actually for you, Anthony, partly. One of the things that I think a lot of people are confused about when we try to calculate what goes on with the public education system and how much it takes, gets a benefit from TIF financing versus a hit if we end the TIF financing, is the taxes that go to the school. So there are general fund taxes, there are county four mil levy, there's a building fund, and there's a sinking fund. It turns out that the offset from state aid that benefits the school district actually only come from two of those taxes. And the building fund isn't influenced, they just get half of those building fund funds where they would have gotten all the building fund. But the one that's really interesting is the TIF allocation actually, according to the county assessor, zeros out all of the sinking funds. So Norman has a sinking fund to pay back our bonds, the county doesn't right now, but they would if they passed some bonds. The school district has a sinking fund to repay bonds, and so does the Botec Center. And the way the county assessor takes out the TIF's half is it doesn't give any money to any of those sinking funds. So Norman Public Schools loses literally 100% of their sinking fund reimbursement from the tax increment area. And when you take that into account in the calculations, it turns out that Norman's, you know, hit, Norman Public Schools hit from taking, getting rid of the TIF is something like $24,000 bucks. It's really a lot less than it was. All of the numbers that are a lot bigger are numbers that only look at general fund taxes. And, you know, again, it's all about peer review, right? I haven't convinced Cindy yet, so I don't know whether I should be telling you this already now, but I'll send it out to everybody. So I think I have it figured out, Anthony. It took a little while, but we're getting it out in front of all the school district people. And the guy who runs the School Superintendent Association thought I was in the right ballpark anyway there. He didn't have a chance to look at it closely. So, you know, it's worth looking at. I actually don't think that it influences Norman Public Schools very much for what it's worth.
4017 Innsbruck Court. For what it's worth, I think it's important to take into account the role of charter schools, the privately funded, private schools that consume a large amount of the... Okay, I'll sit down. I thought I could respond to that.
Just a quick comment. Dr. Ellis, I hope you take into consideration that the property out there in the UMP of TIF was tax exempt, so there would be no real estate taxes. You can't assume it was owned by a tax exempt foundation. They're paying fees in lieu of. So I hope you take that into consideration, that would be when you're doing your calculations. Thank you.
So tonight, we did appoint an ad hoc committee for the temporary delay, I guess you could say it, in the center city form-based code area. We appointed that committee. And so on Thursday, there will be a meeting of that committee, starting at 4 o'clock in the Community Planning and Transportation Committee Room, right here next door, where staff will make a presentation. But more importantly, I encourage everybody who's watching or here to come at 6 o'clock. There will be a listening session where members of the public will have an opportunity to provide feedback, express any concerns, ideas, thoughts, suggestions they have on what the city should do with regard to the form-based code, any changes that you would like for us to consider as we begin this process of having this ad hoc form-based code committee to review the development and the actions that have been happening in the center city area, which is essentially the area where we're at right now, right here in core Norman. And if you have more questions, you can go to the city of Norman website and search the website for the center city and you'll find the page that has tons of information about the work that the prior citizen committee did over a two-year period and then the form-based code that's been adopted. So it's an important topic of discussion. I encourage everybody to participate and to let your voice be heard. We will start that process on Thursday at 6:00 p.m. with a listening session here at the city hall. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. First of all, I want to tell Mackenzie you did an excellent job speaking. Good job, girl. Appreciate that. As we transition to the end of Women's History Month, I want to thank all the strong women that serve up here with me. I know that we don't always agree, but I love that we all get to serve together. So also, I would like to point out that next month is Sexual Violence Awareness Month, so I'm getting a start on that. And I wanted to highlight a couple of organizations in our community. One of, or two of them were here earlier tonight, the Mary Abbott House in Bethesda. Both of those organizations offer treatment in different capacities to children who have been affected by sexual violence and other types of violence and crimes. And so I really appreciate them in our community. Also, I would like to point out that we have a wonderful group here with the Women's Resource Center, and that they have some events coming up. You can check out on Facebook. They have a Facebook, so you can look it up because I know everybody in here wants to support these kinds of things. One of the things that we're doing is, April 20th is the Pause for Consent Dog Walk, which is a really weird thing, I think, to do, but it's a lot of fun. And we walk around Andrews Park with dogs and it raises money. We have about, I don't know, like I think last time was about 130 dogs or something like that come out to this thing. And we, it raises money for the Women's Resource Center and raises awareness for sexual, about sexual violence in our community and the opportunities to, that are offered to women and children and anybody that's a victim of that crime. So I hope that everybody comes out on April 20th. That's all I have.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, everybody watching at home as well. First, I would like to extend a congratulations to Chief Humphrey for your new job. From what I know about, from what I know about Little Rock, I know you have a pretty large challenge ahead of you, but I believe you're up for it. And I think they're going to get a good chief and their police department will improve because of it. So I know we still have a month or so before, maybe a few weeks, a week, two weeks? Okay. One week? Okay. One more week? Okay. And kind of on a similar subject, this Thursday, I'm going to be traveling up to Tulsa with Sheriff Todd Gibson to tour a couple of facilities. The Sobering Center, the Family and Children's Service Crisis Center, the Women in Recovery Center, and their Criminal Justice Center, all to, Sheriff Gibson is wanting to observe these facilities and hopefully bring back some ideas about changes we could make here in Norman. And when he asked me if I'd be interested in going as a representative of the city, I was more than excited to accept and go see what they have going on up in Tulsa and if we might be able to help people in Norman by using some of these similar ideas. So I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, I'm going to be available all this week. I'll be at the Friendly Market where I work, but I invite anybody to stop by anytime throughout the week if you, even on Saturday, I'm there all day Saturday, too. If you have any final questions or concerns about any of the proposals on the ballot next Tuesday, if you are wondering why a certain road project is in there or why I support it, I'd be more than happy to discuss in detail why I think Gray Street should be turned back to two-way, or any other project in there, or why the council came up with the rate structure we did, or why we made the decisions we did. I'll be working again at the deli next Monday night until 2:00 a.m., so anybody that's up late can come see me there as well. I think every single vote is really going to matter here, and these are really big, important issues for our city. And if it means spending two hours talking to one person to get one vote, I'll do whatever it takes. So thank you all for coming and we'll see you next time.
Hello. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for spending your time up here. It's Tuesday night. Mackenzie, thank you for speaking to us tonight. It's always, it's wonderful to see young people and young women get engaged, so that's very exciting. And let's see what's coming up. The Women's and Gender Studies Department at the University of Oklahoma is having a gala or a gala, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, but I was invited by one of my constituents, and it's expensive, but I'm going to go and I get a vegetarian meal, which I always look forward to. And then Bethesda, as Councilmember Wilson mentioned earlier, is also having, it's not a gala, but a swing into spring next Friday at the Railhouse. It should be lots of fun. Then more immediately before that is the, of course, as we know, the vision package is happening next Tuesday, the day before my birthday. As you guys know, I was, I can't stop talking about it. I was elected on my birthday last year, and so I'm very excited to celebrate that, again, with my friends and family. This weekend, on Sunday, will be our regularly scheduled bi-monthly ward meeting. We will be discussing crime prevention. One of our police officers reached out to me via email and asked if he could come meet with me and speak to us about crime in Ward Eight and then also how to prevent crime in Ward Eight. And I thought, well, what an excellent opportunity, come to our ward meeting and tell us how to prevent crime in our neighborhoods. Because we do, if you're not on the Nextdoor app, you should definitely join the Nextdoor app. I follow it. I keep track of events that happen in the neighborhoods, whenever cars are broken into or there's graffiti in the neighborhoods, I keep track of that. And so he'll come and talk to us about that, and that I think will be first on the list because there's, the next thing on the list is going to be, I received some questions about Robinson and Crossroads and the construction, that'll be coming up on that later this year, at least as planned. And so I hope you can make it, Sean. Thank you. Okay. So that meeting is, as usual, at Fire Station Seven from 1:30 to 3:00. And then the last item on our agenda for the Ward Eight meeting will be more discussion, and we've been talking about it for months now, about the vision package. So the transportation bond, the stormwater bond, and the stormwater utility. So any questions that you guys have about that at home, we respond online. We've been trying to be very proactive about it. You should see some videos coming out pretty soon. And I think that's all I have tonight. So thank you all again for coming and thank you for watching at home. Have a wonderful evening.
Yes. Mary.
I just want to personally thank Chief Humphries for his service to this community. I've enjoyed, I've thoroughly enjoyed working with him since my appointment as interim city manager, and wish him the very best with the city of Little Rock. We're going to miss you and your humor and your smile. And I'm really happy for you and Pam. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to second that. Chief Humphries has been a delight to work with. We have been so proud of the many things that our police force has done, how progressive they are, how community-oriented they are, how much they care about all of our residents. And I think that Little Rock's going to get a gem. I think they need him. I know they're, they have lots of issues, but we're really, really going to miss you. And we know this is what you want and your wife, and so we wish you absolute the best of luck, and I know you'll do a great job. So I'm going to make a couple of comments about the election coming up on Tuesday. We've already had a couple of comments. Councilmember Castleberry wants me to remind you all that his Ward Three meeting will be on Wednesday night at the West Side Library, six, at 6:00. So anyone that hasn't been to a meeting, or if you've been to a meeting, you've read the literature, you've got questions, that would be a great opportunity. We'll have staff there to talk about the various ballot initiatives. Then on Thursday night at 6:00 at Roosevelt School, there will be an open house. So there's three, three chances you have before Tuesday. On Tuesday, we're bringing to you the biggest infrastructure package that we have ever put before our residences, our residents. What you learn when you spend a lot of time on a city council, what I've learned as a mayor, is infrastructure is one of our biggest issues. Infrastructure is really, really expensive. We don't have the kind of money in our general fund to take care of the infrastructure for a city that's 190 square miles. So Proposition One is a transportation bond issue. We've done this before. It's not going to raise your taxes. It's got 19 projects. They're all over town. We've got some seed money for Indian Hill Bridge. We've got Jenkins. We've got Two Way Gray. We've got a lot of great projects in there. How do we keep up all of the transportation infrastructure if we don't do bonds? It's the only way we can do it. And the biggest complaint we get from citizens is about traffic congestion and safety in intersections. So this is tremendously important for our city. And something about the transportation bond issue that a lot of our folks don't just care about driving in cars, they care about their bicycles, they want to be able to walk. This is, this is extremely important to our disabilities community, and so... And so in this bond package, in almost every single project, you get sidewalks and you get bike lanes. Those are also really expensive to build, and this is one of the best ways that we can do it. So we're trying to think about every one. The stormwater bond issue is a $60 million bond issue with 30 projects, 33 projects. This is different than what we did before when we brought you a stormwater utility, because what we learned in the stormwater utility last time, you can't make it high enough so that you can pay for all these huge projects. Just one of the projects in this bond issue is $10 million. That's how expensive it is to do this, and there's no federal money to match. We have flooding all over town. It's a safety issue. It's a water quality issue. We really need to do these things. And every year that we put it off, we've been putting it off year after year after year, every year we put it off, it gets more dangerous and more expensive and hurts the water quality in Lake Thunderbird. The third proposition is a utility. This utility is not the utility that we did before. We had a 16-member citizen committee. They met for over a year, every two weeks. They learned about the issues, they knew what the problem was, they know what the solutions are, and they know what the cost is. And these two, the bond issue for stormwater and the utility for stormwater, it was meant to be a package deal. They were meant to go together. The utility is for maintenance, to maintain the infrastructure we have. Transportation's a system, stormwater is a system under that whole transportation system. The difference is, nobody sees it. You don't see the inlets, you don't see the pipes, you don't see the culverts, you don't see all that stuff. But it's there, and we have to take care of it. It's a safety issue. It's a health issue. So please, please, everybody, learn everything you can. Go to visionfornormand.com, read up on it. We've got literature here, if you want it, tonight. And I urge you, please, go vote. And vote yes on all these really, really important issues for the future of our community. So with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.